Good morning. Good morning. I call to order the April 18, 2020 work session of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in our audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please let's fight the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic which is stand one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morowski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here, thank you. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I want to take a minute to talk about the unique forum in which we are meeting today. The Board of Education prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we have decided to convene on this video conference call. Even under these unique circumstances, we have tried to make this meeting as public as we can. Our meeting this morning is one of four board work sessions scheduled this year. The work sessions serve the purpose of board planning and board development. Thus, the format is slightly different than our standard agenda, allowing us in this unique circumstance that we're in today to engage in dialogue around our more pressing priorities at this time. You will note that there is not a lot of items that require board action, yet we will reach consensus on planning next steps in our overall planning effort. For this meeting, we have deferred board development activity, but will work to ensure that this board continues to operate efficiently. We are also recording this meeting and will post the video on our district's website. Documents that are being discussed during the meetings, such as presentations and resolutions, are available for the public to review online. For this meeting on a video conference, we are trying to keep things as simple as possible. We have minimized the agenda to the most important topic. With the meeting notice that went out this week, we provided directions for members of the audience to view this meeting via a live stream on the Internet and to participate in a Q and A as part of the agenda. Instructions for participating in the Q and A were included online with the meeting notice and will again be reviewed when we get to that item on the agenda. We also encourage members of the public to contact us or send us emails and we will try to direct you to the appropriate person at CPS. As well, just want to remind you for the video conference only, please note that the video will be on a 30-second delay. Okay, so again, just to welcome everyone and welcome our audience. We look forward to having you participate as part of our work session. The way our work session kind of works, it is our opportunity to really engage in more dialogue around some of our high priorities, as I stated before. So today, if you have the agenda in front of you, you will note that our primary agenda item today is really about our schools where we are in terms of our COVID-19 plan and to give an update on where the district is and what's going on in our district. And also to talk a little bit about our economic situation, the budget impact. So, Hutton said that we'll move forward and ask the superintendent to begin with her update of the COVID-19 plan and then the board will engage in discussion around that plan.
Thank you, President Jones. So this morning, we have a presentation to provide the board and the community with an update as it relates to COVID-19. So myself, along with the Deputy Superintendent Tiana Amat, in addition to our new Chief Communications Officer, Krista Boyle, will be providing the presentation. And Sarah Turnbull Oliver, our Chief Strategy Officer, will actually be writing this for me. So this is our update as it relates to COVID-19. Again, we are very passionate about the safety of our community and as we think about not only their physical safety, but the emotional safety and academic safety of our kids. That is our primary focus at this time. So if we had to boil our presentation down to three key messages, the three things we really want people to walk away from this presentation, understanding that this entire body of work that we're engaged in is about creating a community of caring adults who are taking care of our kids. It's also about the academic learning of our young people. We have said over and over again, our buildings may be closed, but the district is not. Our children are still learning. They are still participating in classes. They are still doing their lessons. Our seniors will graduate and we are moving academics forward within the district. And then our last key message is really around a sense of hope, that hope gives us the strength to be able to move forward, that there will be a tomorrow and that we have things to look forward to and we need to hold on to that strength. We will be talking about those key components and those messages as we go through our presentation today. We would like to highlight a very brief video that was developed. We've heard from many community members and parents really thanking the CPS community. When I say CPS, I'm not just talking about the employees, but all the people who have come, our partners, volunteers, who have really come to support our district. And this is what our parents and community members have to say to CPS. So, yes, thank you. So hashtag CPS United. Right after this pandemic started, Board Member Morowski said, "We really need a social media campaign." And we launched a social media campaign. So we invite people to really join this effort, this movement. Hashtag CPS United. All right, the next slide will give you some numbers. And what I want to say is that we have a pandemic plan in place as well as a recovery plan. So we already have been working on it and thinking about what will life look like when we go back into our buildings? And we know that we're going to significantly restructure how we do business, not only from an operational standpoint, but also from a teaching and learning standpoint. So I preface this slide with everything that I just said in terms of, "We are not perfect." This is the first time that any of us have experienced a pandemic and we are doing the very best that we can to address the learning for our kids. And not just settling with doing the very best, but constantly striving to do better. And so we have some numbers that we are proud of and we have some numbers that we know we want to improve upon, but we wanted to give you the actual data. And this captures some of what the board asked us about in terms of being able to make contact with our kids as well as the teaching and learning that's taking place while it's giving hope. Thank you, Sarah. Next slide. So as you can see, to date, we've served over 100,000 meals. And so our food hubs, 23 of them are open Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And when kids come, they're actually picking up multiple meals. So on Monday, for example, they're picking up two breakfasts and then two lunches to be able to cover them for Tuesday. So we're making sure that we have every day of the school week covered in terms of our meals served. In addition, we do have partners who are also at our food hubs who are also providing additional meals for families. In terms of spreading hope, we asked our schools to be innovative and to really think about hope, not as this passive word, but as a word that gives strength and active work. And so you can see, here's one example of a school community. Cogdale School, they did a parade for their neighborhood while keeping social distance to really be able to speak to those people who are sick, who are shut in, people who are elderly who cannot get out of their homes, just to say, "We're thinking about you and we hope that you're well." In terms of hope as it relates to social media, and we believe that as leaders and we all consider ourselves leaders within CPS, we should be dealers of hope. And so our Spirit Week a few weeks ago, it was phenomenal. If you want a really feel-good story, you just want to feel good, please go on and check out the videos that our kids made and their parents made and teachers and principals. It was just a phenomenal outpouring of support for our young people. You can see that on Facebook during Spirit Week, we were able to reach over 180,000 people. Over 7,000 people engaged with us. On Twitter, over 21,000 were reached and over 900 engaged with us. And so during that Spirit Week, we had a focus on, one day was an at-home pep rally, another day was a steam day. And so again, I encourage you to go and check out those videos. They are really inspirational and it will really make you feel good about the work that's happening, just not within the academic realm, but also just overall in terms of, from a humanity perspective. The board also really asked us and wanted to know about how are we reaching out to our young people and are we able to reach them? And so we've been able to gather some data around that as well. And again, this is not where we want to be, but we wanted you to have the actual numbers. We have found that in many instances, the phone numbers that we have for our young people, their families or the email addresses aren't correct. And so we're trying to find many different ways to be able to connect with our families and also connect with our kids. We have our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our social workers who are reaching out, trying to make an attempt to make contact with our students, every student at least once a week through email, phone call, or some type of video conferencing. So I am now going to turn the presentation over to our Deputy Superintendent Tiana Amat and she's going to talk about the academic pieces as well as the student contact. And again, these slides directly relate to very specific questions that the board asks. So, Tiana?
Good morning. I'm happy to report on student teaching and learning as a hope advocate. So first, starting off with our student contact. And this information is weekly. So for our total individual student conferences logged last week was a little over 18,000. We were able to reach 71% of our students, about 13,000, and 29% was unreachable. We also collected data around group conferences. So that's anywhere between 5 to 30 students. And last week, we conducted a little over 4,000 group conferences. Here's the weekly bar graph. So that was the first week. And in the second week, we published our pandemic plan. So roughly 8,000. 4,000 contact was made, 2,000 was unreachable. And this is the number for the third week. The third week, we were able to provide teachers use of phone where their home numbers were blocked and the district office numbers appeared. So quite a jump when we had the resources and we gave that to teachers. We also collected data on the group conferences to see how people were connecting. Most people took advantage of online programs like Google, Schoology, Dojo, and Epic. Then we have a variety of video conferencing app, phone calls, email, text, and chat. And this information also helps us with figuring out the needs of our families and also our staff to provide professional development in those areas. So excited to share that we have launched our Remote Learning Plan website. So please go on and log on. There are grade-level lessons. There's particular resources for parents and also a special page for our seniors. We have taken a hybrid approach to teaching and learning. So this is the data collected from the distribution of learning packets. We try to stay ahead and be proactive. So on March 13th, we were able to distribute 24,000 packets for all the schools that were open. We did have schools that closed before the COVID-19 closure. So at our mill hubs of Euler, Roberts, John P. Parker, Parker Woods, and Riverview, we started to distribute packets and that was 6,500. When the governor announced that we weren't returning until May 1st, we set up a second plan with more weeks. So Weeks 3 through 8 packets were distributed. We started April 3rd at five mill hubs. And then we had an extra day on April 5th at Rothenburg. And on the 13th, at all of our mill hubs, we distributed packets, roughly 2,700. And half of those packets were picked up. So we know that we have lost instructional time. So we want to take advantage of the time and the virtual engagement. So we're doing that by monitoring student engagement and logging communication and feedback. We are also taking this time to develop our teachers from learning the adopted curriculum in addition to pedagogy around differentiated instruction. And then part of our strategy, and this was done years ago, around, it used to be called power standards. What are those power standards that we can teach when we return in the fall? So we want to start doing some professional development in that area. So when we return in the fall, typically we have a week. The teachers come in a week before the students and we do professional development. What we're looking at now, since we're doing a lot of professional development in the spring, is using that time for teachers to plan critical standards, to collaborate, to develop systems to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all students. So part of the professional development that teachers are participating in is around trauma-informed care. So what would that look like in supporting kids when they return? So we want to use that week a little differently in the fall. We will also continue to measure academic progress using MAP. We know that we have lost instructional time. So what we want to do is to determine, how are we going to extend a day? So will that look like tutorial enrichment opportunities after school? I would love to pilot a year-round program. CPS was innovative years ago and we had that. It's very costly, but I think that's an opportunity that we can test again to see how that works. In addition, we really want to accelerate and scale our take-home device option so that all kids have Wi-Fi and devices. Summer learning. We are focusing on our ninth through 12th graders, ninth through 12th, and looking at students who are acquiring credits. So right now, we have completed an audit of all of our students in ninth through 12th grade and also seventh and eighth graders who are taking credit-earning courses. We want to provide an opportunity through online modules to look at those critical standards, Schoology, and then we have programs like Play-Doh and Apex for credit recovery. The last time we spoke, I talked about the Education Access Channel. We are launching CPS TV Monday at 7:30 a.m. If it's Spectrum, that's Channel 15. It's Cincinnati Bell, Channel 803. And the program will open with literacy for preschool, early childhood, and we will end the day always with an adult read aloud. But Monday and Wednesdays, it's Literacy Around the World. Tuesdays and Thursdays, theme, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math lessons. And then on Fridays, it's Fun Fridays, where we will have virtual field experiences. So we've connected with partners like the zoo and the Cincinnati Museum to do virtual field trips and experiences. So we're really excited about CPS TV starting on Monday. There will be a schedule published from now until throughout the summer. So please be on the lookout for that. I wanted to take this moment, even though we reviewed this before, but just to share again that state testing was waived. However, before the closing with COVID-19, our alternative assessments and our OWLPA, Ohio English Learner Proficiency Exam, was administered. So the state will score those assessments. We still have a question regarding our cohort of 2021, 22, and 23 since testing is not going to be administered this year. So we're waiting to hear how this decision will affect other cohorts. In addition, there will not be a report card published this year. I just wanted to share some information in regards to college and career readiness testing. We were able to test almost all of our students on the state-funded ACT. As of April 15th, ACT rescheduled. It's April 4th date for June 13th. And the College Board has canceled ACT dates for May 2nd and June 6th. AP exams will continue and they will start on May 11th and it's an at-home exam, 45 minutes, open book, and students can take it on any device. So we have distributed devices, iPads, to all of our students in need who are enrolled in AP courses. An update on fourth quarter grades. First, I would like to share the philosophy behind this policy, this practice. And it's around that grading will be equitable and do no harm to any students. I just want to remind the public that preschool will still not be given grades. So this does not apply to preschool, K through 12. So what we decided to do for fourth quarter, there will be a pass or incomplete option. And the incomplete, it's basically if we haven't had contact with student or limited assignments were submitted. But the teachers will contact students early and often if a student is at risk of an incomplete. Teachers will assign a final second semester grade. So kids have an opportunity, students have an opportunity to increase their final grade. It can increase, but not decrease. So an example of that would be in third quarter, a student earned a C. So we were still in session pretty much for third quarter. Quarter four, a P for pass. And then the final semester grade, the teacher can maintain and leave that grade as a C or go higher based on fourth quarter work. There will be no final assessments or exams administered in second quarter. And any student who needs to recover credits because of an F can also do that right now in addition to summer learning. The class of 2020. We want to acknowledge our vows and sows at the board presentation on May 6th. We are working on a virtual prom in July and then a virtual in-person graduation in August. So stay tuned for those dates. We wanted to share this bit of information with you. At the bottom there, those are the clusters with our DSLs. And we have clustered the schools based on areas. So I can barely see those numbers, but I believe roughly 2,000 on the west side of needing devices. About 1,600 in our central area of schools. 1,300 in east. And then, I can't see the last one, maybe about 900 for our program schools like Montessori and preschool. So we are working with our ITM department to get those devices out. And again, these are for the students we were able to contact. That concludes the teaching and learning.
Next, I invite Krista Boyle, who is our new Chief of Communications and Engagement, to introduce our communication plan. Next, I invite Krista Boyle, who is our new Chief of Communications and Engagement, to introduce our communication plan.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. So um next slide, please. Great. So one of the things we were asked to begin to track was really hope measurements. And so uh we are pleased to be able to present the Hope Index today. You'll see two tables here, um and we will have these available every week. Um, the first, the one at the top is prior week, tracking social media and traditional media. And the one at the bottom is month-to-date. So um we're really excited to be able to share these numbers and especially appreciate the social media piece, the number of people who are out there engaging with us. So thank you for that. Next slide. Oh, Sarah, I think this might be a build. Couple more. There we go. Thank you. So this really, um I think you'll see at the top, really just adjusting our thinking. So as with any crisis, the first several weeks really were just kind of what is the most immediate next thing that we need to be focused on? So as a team, we've really taken a moment to begin to think about this um as a long-term uh reality, honestly. So um not just what is the next day or next week, but really what do the next several months look like? And how do we begin to get ahead of that? Um, a couple other things I want to point out. Inform and motivate, um those are really two things that we are trying to keep in mind with every communication, internal and external, that goes out into the world. And staying focused on, you see the number, or the words down here, gratitude, facts, encouragement, community, optimism. So, next slide. So as we think about the next eight weeks, and really this started the week of April 6th. Um, I'm not going to go through all of these, but just wanted to give you guys an idea of how we're thinking about really through the end of the school year. So three weeks focused on remote learning, that includes our really great microsite. Um, next week, as Tiana mentioned, we are really focused on the cable TV and helping to support the launch of that um so that parents and kids really know about that resource and know where to go to get the information. Uh, also want to call out a couple of just really gratitude pieces. So next week, superhero parents, there'll be a chance to engage on social media um and to kind of nominate or highlight parents and really the work that they are really doing in a different way right now. Um, also talking about week of April 27th, Spirit Week 2. Uh, we are prepared for Governor DeWine's uh potential announcement of an extension, should that happen. So we will be ready to launch that um as early as this week. Uh, Teacher Appreciation, which is something that will be virtual this year, so trying to make that special. And then you'll see a lot on here around senior recognition. So understanding that a lot of the traditional modes of recognizing that incredible achievement are, will not happen this year, figuring out how to get creative um through uh virtual opportunities, digital, and then also things like yard signs. Next slide. And then also want to make sure that we are creating a consistent cadence of information going forward so that people know what to expect when. Uh, there will be two items that we are focused on initially. The first is more video, um especially from the superintendent, but also other members of the leadership team. Um, we'll be doing one for remote learning coming up this week, for example. And then the second is, and this will launch for the first time on Monday, is a weekly template of just one to three things people should be focused on for that week. It'll go out on Monday, uh it will be echoed through other channels, and it will help inform families, but then also allow our principals to really reiterate core messages across their weekly communication. And yep, that was my last slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. So I know that many people may be wondering, with COVID-19, so what's happening with our strategic plan? And what is the strategic impact on our strategic plan? And so we looked at the specific direct measures that are in the strategic plan, pulled those out, and those measures will be the the key indicators that we're looking at, and those are the ones that I'll talk about moving forward. So we know that the AIR Assessment, American Institution for Research, the assessments at grades three, six, and nine have been waived. And so I will, we will not have test scores for those grade levels um as it relates to the state assessment. The um Advanced Placement Test will take place in April. And as Deputy Superintendent Mott indicated, it'll be a 45-minute assessment per subject, and it will be an open-book assessment. We did allow seniors, or I'm sorry, students who are taking Advanced Placement, the opportunity to get access to their lockers, to get those items. And we did it in a safe way to stagger the kids who are coming in and making sure that we have safety precautions in place. We were able to give the ACT in February, and so we'll have results for the ACT. In terms of career credentials and points earned, that that's going to be extremely hard to be able to measure, and I think my next slide says that, because of the assessment that has to be given. So part of those assessments to get those credential, there's an actual test, but some of it's also a demonstration. In addition to the fact that we've lost instructional time, that kids have not had, as it relates to earning those career credentials. And so I doubt, um I highly doubt that we will have the type of career credential um accomplishments that we've had in the past. We know that considering that the graduation rate is always a year behind, that our graduation rate will be a 79%. If there were a state report card, that's what would be reported. In terms of the three Es, we're still working um to make sure that our kids enroll, enlist, or employ. Um, we've obviously experienced some delays in that, in just the, some of the institutions are closed in which we operate with to make sure our kids are accepting to one of those pathways. As it relates to our students with disabilities, as well as our English language learners, the uh indicators that are on the measures in the back of the strategic plan are tied directly back up to the state assessments, which have not been given other than the one that was given previously for the English language learners. And so just really wanted to give you an update as to what we can move forward with in terms of results, and then those things that have been waived. And I believe the next slide just gives you a little bit more detail as it relates to the impact of um being able to get our kids credentialed. And so you can see that in some instances, the kids don't have the devices or the connectivity to be able to log into the assessment to take their credentials. It also might be um good for everyone to remember, although we have a one-to-one initiative at grades four through 12, Friday, the 13th was, that was the last day for students. We anticipated being back in the building on that Monday, and we could not make it back in because there were so many um instances of which stories were coming to the administration that this person may be confirmed who's linked to someone else at another school. And it just kept going and going. And so that's the reason we decided to go ahead and close school. So I'm saying all that to say is that the students did not have the opportunity to take their books home with them. And for those who are in the take-home program, were not able to take devices. And so that's the reason why some kids don't have devices. Um, it's because we were not able to distribute those on what would have been our last day. Next slide, please. In terms of health and safety, um we are like really, really rethinking some of our health and safety measures, especially as a result of um COVID-19. And so I think it is very fair to say that the entire district community, we are looking very carefully at how we do business overall in general. And so we are challenging ourselves and our departments and our employees to think differently about the work. Um, we've been disrupted, our system has been disrupted, and it's now the time for us to demonstrate innovation and to do things differently. Uh, we will be doing that not only as it relates to teaching and learning, but also as it relates to health and safety. In terms of critical incidences, we have a reduction in critical incidences, primarily probably because we're not in session right now. Um, but that is a goal that in the strategic plan, in the back of the book, in terms of measures, we will meet. Um, in terms of alternative learning centers within our schools, so these are the classrooms that take place of in-school suspension. We were able to um increase that number this year and plan on continuing to increase it next year. Social workers, we plan to increase our number of social workers for next school year. But um at this point, it is, it is in the budget as a budget request. And in terms of social and emotional learning, we continue to um do planning to make sure that we can have more quality improvement projects as it relates to social and emotional learning for next year. And we will also, next year, continue our work as it relates to parental and guardian consent. But just recognizing that some of this work has not continued just because the kids are actually not on site. I will say that the social and emotional work continues. Um, specifically, our social workers are contacting our kids, our kids that may be at risk or not having what they need, or our kids who may be at risk for um being neglected. And so please know that we're working not only with um our department, but also with Children's Hospital on this avenue. As it relates to community engagement, we still plan to increase our resource coordinators for next year. Again, that is in our budget request. This year, we did increase the number of parent, organized parent groups within our schools by eight. We do plan to continue to build that out for next year as well. And uh Krista, as our new Chief of Community Engagement and Communications, is working on a customer care satisfaction criteria. So how can we actually um uh determine how successful and effective we are with being able to handle uh the care of our um our parents and our students to a level of satisfaction? I think this might be also an opportune time, we did not mention it earlier, but we are going to be launching a Facebook Live event um centered for parents to be able to engage with us. So again, it's not just us pushing out information, but us also engaging parents specifically around two topics. And that, those two topics are seniors who are graduating in terms of who need credit recovery. And the second topic is around the grading for fourth quarter. So look forward to that Facebook Live opportunity. It'll be our first time doing it, so really excited about that. Under optimized capabilities, this past school year, or I should say, this school year before we left um our buildings, all of our schools, as well as central office departments, were engaged in quality improvement projects. As a matter of fact, we've used this time to also do some more professional development as it relates to quality improvement. And so we have a quality improvement manager who has been offering professional development, virtual professional development, and 80 central office employees um signed up for that. And so we're really excited that people are engaged in quality improvement and want to continue because of the good results we're seeing. Uh, we do anticipate that we'll make some recommendations to the board as it relates to board policies that we may need to develop as a result of this pandemic situation. But also rest assured that we are still continuing to build out process maps and structures aligned to board policies. And then the last category under optimized capabilities uh is really focused on our employee engagement. And so we are continuing to use the Q12, which is a Gallup survey of 12 questions that measure employee engagement. So we used it for Central Office and Iowa Street this year. We did a um a survey at the beginning of the school year. And then we, each department developed plans um with the department members to identify very specific measures that we wanted to improve on as it related to that individual department-specific data related to the Q12 questions. We will launch another Q12 survey later on this month. And that work will continue next year. We plan to take the Q12 model to some of our schools. And then the last category on, under the strategic plan is growth. So in our strategic plan, it calls for us to grow um at about a rate of 400 kids per year. Um, and so this year, as well as increase our market share. This year, we increased our market share and actually exceeded the growth. Um, we were anticipated to be able to grow to about um 400 more kids. And this year, we grew over 500 kids, and that's a 500 net. So we are um growing about a school a year. And um we've also seen quite a bit of growth in our preschool enrollment. Uh, we exceeded our target for preschool enrollment this year and really want to thank the um team that really worked on that with um our director Vera Brooks. In addition, our plan calls for adding a building a year. And so this year, we added the Elementary Montessori Gamble School. And next year, we plan to open Lighthouse as a new CPS school. And um we're also looking at the Mozart uh building as a new site as well. In addition, we will be opening Carthage as a school that goes beyond preschool. And so we anticipate opening at least um three new sites for the upcoming school year. So we anticipate exceeding that measure as well. So the real big message around the strategic plan is that we are moving forward. We are not sitting back and resting, um but we're continuing to move the work forward. The administration is excited to be able to bring an entire growth presentation to the board in early May. And that concludes our update as it relates to COVID-19. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you, Superintendent, for that very comprehensive update. And I really appreciate all the work that your team has put into this. Uh, you, you, you all covered the points that, that some of the board members had expressed when we were pulling together this agenda. So I really appreciate that. So now we'll open up for a dialogue with uh board members, a dialogue consisting of comments or questions. Um, Ms. Bowers, followed by Mr. Murawski, followed by Mr. Lindy.
I would like to concur with President Jones. Thank you um for all that were involved in that presentation. It was very informative. Um, I really appreciate the expansion of the meal sites. Um, because I'm sure you have heard that the four sites that were identified initially, um I want to say it was Monday, or maybe last Monday, but it was very um congestive. But I, I was happy to see that all of the meal sites now were able to deliver the the packets, or have the packets available for families. One of the questions I do have um is that do, will packets still be available this week? Because I thought that I heard that they had ran out of packets last week for families for the remainder of the eight weeks. That's one question. Um, I will also commend the district on actually um the uh customer care. I've had several people that have utilized the customer care, uh and specifically Ms. Angela is great. I ended up calling her myself for, for, for a different reason. But um she, it was, it was very easy to use, and parents were happy to use the customer care. Um, the sec, the clarification for the AP exam, I, I saw uh Deputy Superintendent Amat that you mentioned that it was May 11th and 12th. And then Superintendent Mitchell, on your slide, it said it was April 2020. So just to clarify, what is the date for the uh uh College Board exam? Is the second question. And then the third question for Deputy Superintendent Amat, um when you said that there won't be any fourth quarter grades um for students, just a pass or incomplete based on how much work they turn in, and, and some type of algo, uh algorithm with third quarter that would determine a final grade. But for our high school students who weigh heavily on GPA, especially our graduating seniors, um who are in need of a night or a specific GPA at the end of fourth quarter to uh guarantee scholarship opportunities, what does that look like for seniors and just in general for high school students as far as GPA going forward? And I think that was the three questions. I'm sorry.
Hi, Ms. Bowers.
Hi.
Actually, we're maintaining our uh final grade practice, which is looking at, which is a combination of third and fourth quarter. So kids are able to, our students, our seniors, um are able to increase uh that grade in fourth quarter, which goes into their GPA. That's final grade is their GPA. So that will roll over there. Um, the question around AP testing, the date has changed, so now it is in May.
Okay.
And then
clarification, how is the grade determined for your seniors? If it's not passed or incomplete, are the teachers grading that work?
Yes, they're, they're submitting, they're submitting the work to teachers in a variety of ways. We put it as a um pass incomplete because we don't have access for all of the kids, or the kids that do not have the access. But we wanted to reward um or acknowledge, I don't, I don't even want to say reward. We wanted to acknowledge the efforts of our kids um who are able to submit the work and give them credit for it. And we're going And we're going to do that through the final semester grade. Your first question was around packets. We will, at some sites, they do have extra. So the principals are bringing those packets out. So the last day was supposed to be Monday, but we handed out more packets on Wednesday until all packets will be clearly picked up. So if there's more packets, they will be out during the mill site pickup.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morosky, followed by Mr. Lindy.
Awesome. Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Great. Thanks for that presentation, putting it together. It was super informative and absolutely addressed a number of the things that are on my brain. I have a couple of questions and comments. First question is, will that CPS TV be available online for people that don't have Spectrum or Cincinnati Bell?
Um, I have to look into that. When you say online, it will be on our educational remote learning website. But I don't know if it takes you to the broadcast. Well, I'll look into that for you.
Cool. Thank you. Question number one, question number two, or really a statement slash question. I was really excited to hear about the summer opportunities if we're able to do it. Obviously, the thing that's keeping all of us up to some extent, among other things at night, is there are students who may already be behind, that summer is hard enough on them with this. So I added to it. So I was happy to see that. So really, I guess it's not a question. It's just a kudos. And I'm, I'm excited to see how that unfolds. And if there are more opportunities, if it's the year round piece, Ms. Amat, that you addressed, I think that's great, whatever it could possibly be. I'm in favor of. Comments that I hear, you brought up the Lighthouse in the growth plan. Folks in Madisonville are excited about that prospect. And also I think have some trepidation too, because they were so used to Lighthouse. So just kind of maybe a heads up to ensure that folks in Madisonville know what our plans are, the intention. Obviously, I mean, I've, our intention is to continue the great program. I mean, that was there, which is why we did this. There are some specific concerns too about the community gardens and will these things continue? So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm sure other board members have heard that too. If not, now you've heard it. But just maybe something we could communicate to them to the best of our ability with everything being up in the air right now anyway. And then lastly, I guess it's just another comment, something I've been thinking about. And maybe somebody, if anybody has any insight, please give it to me. I haven't heard anything. So Houseville one ninety seven was great and it did some nice things. But from my perspective, it seems that the policy ramifications of this closure need to extend for at least a year, i.e. third grade reading. I don't see how that, I don't see how that happens next year after this pause in learning. So I'm just, I guess encouraging us to stay at the forefront and be proactive with that with the state lawmakers to sort of encourage them to be realistic. They've shown that they are realistic. I think by and large, I've been pretty happy with how the legislature and the governor have handled this. But then it's not going to be back to normal when this, this all ends. And there's going to be a lot of effort and a lot of money spent to try to convince people it's business as usual, and it's not. So I guess this is my encouragement. But then also, has there been any talk about that? Does anyone have any insight, like as far as extending some of these delays in testing? Has anyone heard anything besides?
So I haven't heard anything out of the governor's office. However, a few weeks ago, I was on a phone call with superintendents from across the state with Sherrod Brown. And the superintendent from Upper Arlington, which is comparable to a Wyoming school district, was petitioning not to have testing take place next year. And so his argument is that if you think there's a gap now between kids in terms of what they have access to, it has even widened and become even larger. And so to have a testing next year would not be a good idea. And so we will work very hard on that lobbying front. I will say though, it'll be very good for the suburban districts to argue that point as well. And they'll carry quite honestly, a lot more weight than we will. Because sometimes we're viewed as being the whiny crybabies, the urban. And so the suburbans are thinking that there shouldn't be testing next year as, as well. So I wanted to pass that on to you. We'll get on that. In terms of the Lighthouse plan, Susan Bunty, are you on? Can you address for Board Member Morowski, the Lighthouse plan?
Good morning. I think I'm having trouble sending my video, but hi, everyone. We have still, hi, it's good to see all of you. We are still meeting on a weekly, actually bi-weekly basis with the Lighthouse team. We're meeting virtually. So to Board Member Morosky's point, I will make sure that that becomes an agenda item on how we can communicate that to the Madisonville community. It's my understanding that all of that will continue because that property, that the gardens and the large structure, the greenhouse, that still will be owned by Lighthouse. But I will confirm that and then make sure that we have a plan.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty. Appreciate it.
Okay. I believe Mr. Lindy, you were next, but Ms. Bolton wanted, I believe, to respond directly to Mr. Morosky's question. So Ms. Bolton, if you could do that, and then Mr. Lindy will follow.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. Mike's point is well taken, and there is an effort statewide among urbans and the suburbans and the rurals to take this opportunity to rethink, because everyone's aware, we're not going to be returning to what was once normal. And to use this opportunity to extend this transition, including maybe delaying the testing, coming up with a new and different report card, and also talking in terms of what we really mean by vouchers, because there may be less interest in that going down the road. So it's an interesting coalition that is developing, extending it. And it will require all of us to, to kind of meet together and lobby extensive transition. And I know that's happening nationally as well. Good point.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy, followed by Ms. Bates.
Great. Thanks, Carolyn. And I, so I wanted to share some positive feedback. And then I had a couple of points I wanted to ask some follow up questions on. But I think I wanted to start by just sharing my real gratitude for the leadership of Laura and your team again. I, I know I said this last time, but I think it's worth saying again. I think in our lifetimes, nothing like this has happened, you know? And I think that crises are opportunities to show what our values are. And I think you and your team are doing a remarkable job of that. And I love the way you're centering these ideas that I think we should rally around, which are communities of caring adults, the kids are learning as much as possible in this idea of hope. I just think, I think that's great and I want to commend you and your team. On like additional, just positive feedback, I think that the data that you all, it's so great to see the data you're collecting, both on contact, on devices, it's great to see that increasing week over week. I think that's really powerful and it speaks to the work that you all are doing. Thank you. I spent some time with the remote learning website, which I thought not only looks beautiful, but has some really great resources. I love, just as a parent, I love it of the great minds link, because it was very easy to use for a parent with children who's also trying to work. I thought that was great. Would echo the positive feedback on the CPS TV that's come from some people. And I think that the, the fact that we're thinking in a humane way about grading policy, I think is great. That there are ways, not just to be realistic about challenges kids face, but create ways for kids to increase their grades through the work that they're doing between now and the end of this year. I thought that was just all, all really, really, really great things. So thank you. I think that on the, on the constructive feedback front, I had, I had four, my thought was let me just mention the four things I have and then give you Superintendent or, or Tiana a chance to respond to the ones you'd like to. So four things. First one is, I, one, I think opportunity for, for a challenge here is to have not just those priorities, but to set some goals against them. Like I know that, I thought the Hope Index was interesting and it's neat to see I said to some aligned things. But like, what if we were to say, you know, something really bold and ambitious in this, in this context that we could run after, align to those three values we have, but would that look like? Let's go get it. I think two, and this may be my most important one, on all the things you're tracking, whether it's student contact, student engagement with learning or device access. I'd love to hear you all talk about, like on a percentage basis, how do you feel about those numbers? Like, do we feel great about this? Do we feel kind of in the middle about this? Do we feel terrible about this? Like you, you can see the numbers go up. That's great. But like as a percentage basis of kids in CPS, how do you feel about it? And what are we doing about that? And then related there, are, are we, are you doing equity checks on those numbers? Like, do you break out that data based on race? Do you break out that data based on class? And are there patterns there that are worth paying attention to? That, that's I think my biggest question. I'm also interested in this topic that came up a second ago on, on, on what thinking is happening now about contingency plans for next fall? If we're in a situation where this happens again, or we haven't come back, and can the board help on that? I had some miscellaneous stuff. If we don't get to it, it's no problem. But I, I think like, I think one great way to build strong culture is to recognize people. And I think there are some teachers out there doing incredible things under the circumstances. And there are opportunities to be public to that, like in board meetings or in other ways. I had a friend recommend the idea of, of student projects instead of exams, because kids have a lot of time on their hands and there are ways to really go after like a project that's meaningful for them. And I have this lingering question about reading instruction, just like how, like kids have a lot of time on their hands. You can read or listen on audible the books being read. There's a lot of opportunity to leverage that. And I was curious to what extent folks are thinking about that. So that's the positive, I think, a couple of prioritized pieces of feedback. The biggest thing on my mind is like, of the data we're tracking on a percentage basis and on an equity basis, how do we feel about it? And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Superintendent, I, hold on, hold up. Ms. Bates, I got you. Hold on a second. I, I didn't know if the superintendent or anybody wanted to respond to Mr. Lindy first.
Yes. So I was, I was going back through my COVID nineteen notebook, through all of our conversations to see if we, if we set some specific measures as related to those three big themes. And, and we have not set specific measures. And I'd had to check with Deputy Superintendent Amat to see if we broke out the data by subgroup. Do we feel good about our level of contact with kids? The number or percentage of kids who are engaged in our lessons? I would say absolutely not. We would not be satisfied until we had a hundred percent. I think that more than anything now, this reinforces to us that it is critically important. I'm not sure how we continue to get the message out, but it's critically important for us to be in constant contact with parents and to have the correct contact information. And so that's been the holdup in many instances as it relates to making that contact with kids and also checking up with them on their work. We don't always have phone numbers that work or email addresses that are correct. And so we've been able to, you know, track some parents down through Facebook. But this, more than anything, highlights that we need people to constantly make sure that they're updating their information, giving us correct contact info so that we can make sure that we're constantly corresponding with them. So we will not be satisfied until we had a hundred percent on all of those things as a short answer. And we are developing our recovery plan as it relates to in the fall, and we can't break the data out by subgroup. So I had that down as a to do.
Okay. Thank you. We have Ms. Bates, then we have Mr. Messer, then we have Ms. Bolton, then we have Ms. Bowers, then we have Ms. Jones, and we really need to tighten up our timelines. So please be brief so we can get everybody in. Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Okay, yes. I want to go back to growth and also Ms. Jones referred to the webinar that we had with the Council of Great City School, board members. And one part of the growth, I mean, nothing we're talking about today is cheap. Our startup with, you know, new methods redesign is going to be expensive. We, back in two thousand eight, when we had the recession, that's when we really started to grow because parents couldn't afford the tuition. Vouchers are not, they don't cover the full amount. And that began our growth. We can anticipate, we're growing. We can anticipate a surge, I think, without, you know, without any hesitation there. There, we're, we're heading into conversations, or not we, but our, our federal legislature is heading into conversations about the fourth stimulus bill. And we have the current stimulus bill, which we received a teen, education received a teeny tiny amount based on Title One. That's how the allocations are being made. But one inroad that the Council of Great City Schools is really encouraging districts to have a full court press on is infrastructure, because there's money in those stimulus bills for infrastructure, for bridges, for roads. And we need, and some of our larger districts in the country have started conversations with their delegation, and it's been received really well. We need to talk to our delegation regarding schools getting some of that infrastructure money. Now, our lobbyists don't work for us on the, on the federal level. It's going to have to be a conversation for, you know, by, by perhaps our superintendent, you know, what, board members who, who may have relationships, although we had our, our conferences canceled. So those weren't continuing this year, right, Eve? But anyway, it's very important that we talk to Sherrod Brown, we talked to Rob Portman, and we talked to Steve Shabbett about having the ability to use that stimulus infrastructure money for schools. And the other point that I wanted to bring up is that there is a letter that the Council of Great City Schools really wants full participation from superintendents on regarding stimulus funding. And Ms. Mitchell, if you can sign on to that letter, they have, I believe, forty-three of the seventy-some districts' superintendents already signed off on it. So if you can send an electronic signature to Michael Casserly, that would be very, very helpful. But yeah, the fourth stimulus bill, there's a real push by this council and hopefully NSBA to get more education funding and perhaps even have education funding at the top. So this could be a real opportunity for us to get the money that we need to reopen and to reopen with the, with the changes, because as we said before, it's not going to be the same. And it's not going to be cheap to redesign either.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bates. Mr. Messer. And I'm, I'm pushing folks, guys. I want everybody to be heard. So I'm pushing you, Mr. Messer.
Thank you. And can you hear me just to make sure?
Yes.
Okay, good. So thank you for the updates. And I think the thing that sings from that is innovation and innovation that happened very quickly. So thank you for that. It just reaffirms, I, I mean, I think the message in my head is CPS was built for times like this, when you've got to bring people together to get a positive outcome. So, you know, that might be another hashtag, we were built for this. But I think it really speaks to the efforts that you've made and just a shout out, you know, to our two teachers and our pares. And I think this is kind of going back to the, to earlier conversations. These pares are so important and they've even set up time with our children to connect. Our kids miss them just as much as they miss Ms. Dessa and Ms. Duffy. So, you know, Ms. Terry and Ms. Aguilera have both set up reading times with our kids and things like that. It's just been wonderful. So thank you to all of our teachers and our pares for what they're doing to reach out. The CPS TV, I think, is just fabulous. And I think an opportunity to share that with our community preschool providers as a resource, because I think it connects kids to CPS that may not be in our doors today, but it starts to show, you know, what we do in times like this and that we're there for them. And when it comes time for them to choose their next school, that we want to be that first choice. But I think the biggest thing Um, but I think the biggest thing here is that thirty percent-ish, um, where it's difficult to access the children. And I've heard that from friends who are teachers, how frustrating that can be, et cetera. Um, and I wondered if we could scope maybe a tiger team or a rapid response team where we bring together, a group of teachers who have gotten best practices, and I think there are probably some of those out there, um, bring together some of our community leaders, under, all that under kind of the CPS United, and just say, what could we, what could we reduce that to? Um, and is it engaging churches? Is it engaging community councils? Is it, you know, just moving heaven and earth to do everything we can for that thirty percent? Because, um, they are the children, frankly, that we need to be connected to the most. They need the most resources because maybe it's because they have parents that are on the front line dealing with the crisis. Maybe it's because a, a variety of reasons. So I think putting a, a tiger team or a rapid response team on that and bringing the community together, I think we can lower that. But, um, uh, regardless, those kids are depending on us to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms., uh, Ms. Bowden.
Okay, I'm gonna do it as fast as I can, that, Madam President. I would say what Melanie has said about anticipating increased enrollment. And I would particularly be concerned on the growth piece that we move forward on, growth as rapidly as we are financially able to do. I am concerned about, uh, having a preschool dedicated building or whatever on the east side, because I think we have basically in the central area, we've got Vine. And on the west side now, we have Mozart and what have you. But I think there's going to be a greater demand than ever, uh, again, on the east side. So I, I appreciate that and, uh, also what, uh, Mike was saying about the needing to lobby and widen this opportunity for reform. I am concerned that, um, that the kids needing credentialing are the ones that we don't seem to have a plan. And it's not our fault. It's not their fault. It's not anybody's fault. But whatever that infrastructure was for credentialing, because many of these kids depend upon the credentialing to get a good start in life as well as even get out of high school. So I'd really like this to see if there's a way to dig deeper and see if we don't have some more partners that can help or we can get the state to do some things that would allow additional opportunities for the credentialing kids. Um, to the community piece, I hope we're using or contacting our LSDMCs, because some schools have actually had virtual meetings of LSDMCs and others have not had any communication whatsoever. Also, um, I'm really glad we're moving ahead on CLC growth. I think that's, that's proven more important than we even thought it was. And wanted to know if we have a way to establish or, uh, hold accountable the resource coordinators that we have already as to what they have done during this process. Hopefully, they didn't, you know, go somewhere else, but they, we need them more now than, than ever. And I'm interested in that accountability, uh, piece. Um, for the summer program, uh, would reach out to the Cincinnati Civic Garden Center. They have already plans that they could help us with, and that would be really great. They have programs that are those virtual programs and what have you. So I would really suggest us, uh, using that opportunity, uh, in, in that part, and that, and build that partnership. I think they're even interested in becoming a lead agency at whatever new schools are, are expanding into community learning centers. Uh, this has been a great opportunity for us to find out what we don't have. It's also been a great opportunity to find out our various cohorts, which kids have the technology, the devices, the access. I like, I think you mentioned it a while back about the different cohorts and subgroups. I think it was Ben that may have mentioned it. I'd really like to see some of these numbers that you presented to us from a standpoint of our IEP kids, district-wide or by school. I'd like to see some of these numbers by teacher. Uh, but, but English language learners, the IEP kids, uh, the AP kids, because I think that's also going to be an equity study that will help guide us even, maybe even guide us some of the budget issues that we have. Um, last couple of things, how have we used or have we used? And can we expand the use of our school-based health centers? As we move into more months, maybe of this, because of the mental health, uh, services provided and also a way to check into the kids that, that do see us. As we, is this may loosen or is it may change? Can we possibly look at the better use of the school-based health centers? And then, uh, we've, uh, the other piece I would, I would ask, uh, principals doing a newsletter as they do, uh, weekly or monthly basis, would be great if that could be, and maybe it already is happening, go to the parents and, and what have you of their schools. The, the last thing I'll say then is, um, this sounds strange, but a part of maybe one of the things that we can do now and in the future is literally have online instruction by the teachers that teach the best courses or best topics that are part of the standards. It'd be great to have a library of great instruction by CPS instruction people. It'd be great that they could have gone to a, a college, if you will, a CPS college or pre-college or a high school and be able to offer our, there are teachers that do fabulous things on a particular subject and probably are well-known. It would be great to have that as a library of our wonderful instructors, especially emphasizing also not only the standards in the academics, but I know part of the thing the kids have missed certainly is the athletics. They've missed the clubs and they've missed their music classes and what have you. I just think it'd be great to have a CPS online school, K-12, that people could access particular, uh, uh, so there's not just teachers having to, to teach only their students, but just something down the road. And I know teachers would be very interested. They'd like to show their wares, especially about the things that they favor the most in teaching, but it'd be great to have that somewhere in the bank. Thank you for all the work that you're doing and keep being as flexible as you can. And, um, I'm real proud of, of CPS.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, you started this roundoff. And so I'm letting you come in, but please be brief. Uh, we, we are over time. It's all good stuff, so I'm not complaining about that. But we do have to push on or this live broadcast is going to cut us off. So anyway, Ms. Bowers, go ahead.
Well, I'm glad that you're ending with me because I just have something positive to say.
I'm not ending with you. I'm ending with me.
You're telling me to close it off. So just in response to Ben and just, uh, kudos to, uh, our, our teachers. And I want to give a shout out to us, a lot of our community partners who have been helping our teachers close, doing troubleshooting. Uh, Ben, we talked, and then Superintendent talked about access to, um, to actual, uh, families. And the schools and teachers through email and do ongoing collaboration have been working with partners to close that gap for access to parents and even going above and beyond to getting parents what they need, which is how I kind of found out about the, um, not enough packets were available was through other community partners who were going out to help families get connected. So the partners have been very instrumental in helping teachers connect, uh, with families that are not able to connect just directly, uh, from the school. So just kudos to that collab, for that collaboration.
Okay, so, so I'll close it out. And I actually jotted down like six questions and/or, and/or comments, but most of them have been covered. So I'll kind of close this part of the agenda off by, um, just sort of reiterating. I just want to make a point that's, you know, this is important to all of us. But we, we talked about it and I think there are some recommendations about it. I think we're all concerned, and this is specific to student learning. We're all concerned that situations like this widen the achievement gap. And I think some of the areas that I've heard in terms of the innovation and the creativity and the flexibility that we build into this is so crucial to ensuring that that achievement gap doesn't widen. Um, I really, really, really like, um, the, uh, hearing about how we will engage, uh, parents of our kids, um, using Facebook, because the reality of it is that's where a lot of these comments come. You know, the ones that we sometimes see, we hear it from the parents on Facebook. So I'm really, really happy to hear that. Um, I, I also, uh, like the idea of the, the innovation in using our people resources. Um, because, you know, for, and I use pares as an example. They, they really could be doing a lot more in terms of engaging with the kids and whatever. So I'm really happy about that. So to close this portion out, again, thank you all, uh, thanks to the leadership for what you're doing. But the theme that I, that I'm hearing and I'm, I'm sort of repeating it is flexibility, innovation and engagement. And so, uh, I think we're doing well with that and, and I'm, I'm very proud as well of what CPS has done during this, uh, unfortunate circumstance. So thank you. Okay, are we ready to move on then? Okay, uh, so next up, I believe, uh, Ms. Wagner is going to address kind of the budget impact and the economic forecast around this. And again, the format is the same. Um, she will present, uh, give her information and then we'll have the opportunity to respond. Thanks.
Morning, everyone. I'm happy to, oops. Happy to be here today to talk to you about update on finances. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, there's three major messages I want everybody to take away from today. The first one being that we are smack dab in the middle of, um, our developing our fiscal year 21 budget, um, planning for growth, um, and all the changes that are being driven by the strategic plan. Um, and then in March, COVID-19, um, hit us. And so we turned our efforts towards the leadership team, towards our efforts towards how to convert to a remote learning environment and a remote, remote working environment. Um, but now we have started to turn our efforts to what does our new normal look like? And how would that budget support that? So just for those, uh, board members who haven't lived through a budget cycle with us yet or, um, and those members of the public, um, we typically start our process in November with student projections. Um, and we look at, this year, we've looked at the, the scope of the strategic plan for next year and what, what were our measures, of growth measures were going to be. And then in December, um, we had a board retreat and we received input from the board on, um, their desires and priorities for the budget. Uh, typically I set a general fund budget target based off of the fall forecast. Um, the schools start working on all their staffing formulas and, and how they're going to meet the needs of their students for the next year. And then we actually started a brand new process this year, um, and in terms of obtaining employee engagement in the budget development process. And so I'll talk about that in just a second. And then in January, we focus our efforts on the equity process, Division 2020 planning, um, and then just reviewing all the school, school staffing, uh, to make sure that we're, um, compliant with the collective bargaining agreements and state and federal law. And then, of course, in February, we start, um, allocating the non-school per pupil allocation so the schools can determine how to spend their non-personnel items. Central office kicks off their budget initiatives. And the senior leadership team, um, performance leadership team starts reviewing the, um, priorities, goals and measures of the current year versus, um, the, and the next year plan that would support the strategic plan. And then they obviously went through the mission margin matrix to determine budget, uh, priorities and what, what items are having the biggest impact for our, our dollars. And then in March, of course, is when, um, our life changed just a little bit. Uh, we continued working on consolidated all the budget asks and analyzing those changes. Um, in April, we had originally scheduled our first public hearing, um, which we were still scheduled for next Wednesday. Um, and then we planned to gather feedback from the public, either using, um, thought exchange or something just as vibrant. We will revise and adjust, um, the line items of the budget. And then we will host our second public hearing, I believe, is scheduled for May 5th, May 6th. Uh, we will once again refine, uh, refine some of the budget allocations. And then hopefully by the end of May, submit our budget for final approval by the Board of Education so that in June, we can load the budget into our financial system, um, so people can start planning their contracts for the year. And, um, we have a requirement to file the budget with the Hamilton County Budget Commission by the end of June. So, um, we always have to remind ourselves that what our strategies are. And we always start off with what's in the strategic plan that was driven by, um, a year-long process with, um, our board members. So we want all of our efforts to be straight, um, focused on student-centered decision-making, health and safety, community engagement, optimize capabilities and of course, growth. And we look at everything with a lens, through the lens of equity. The budget parameters for this year, um, started with a student projection of thirty-six thousand nine hundred sixty, which is approximately six hundred students more than last year, and we continue to grow. And that has already presented a big challenge for us financially, because if you recall, the state foundation formula was frozen to last year's revenue. But we're trying to support six hundred student growth across the district with the same level of dollars that we had last year, which, um, means everybody, every student gets a little bit less or we have to cut other things. So the closure and the economic, uh, information that's coming out is making that even much bigger challenge for us. Uh, we also look at everything that was in the strategic plan and what was required to be implemented for fiscal year 21. Um, and then, um, we had the board retreat. I have a picture of that in just a second. And then, um, in the fall, I submitted the budget, calculated the budget target for next year to be six hundred forty-two million based on the November forecast. Um, and that allowed for two years of positive cash balances, um, moving forward with the forty-eight million dollar renewal. So this is, I know you can't read this and I don't want you to, but this was the feedback we received from the board. And so you can say that we took your feedback very seriously, two pages of it, which is all tied to the strategic plan and we are working through all those requests. Um, this represents the new, uh, employee engagement. And so every department, all twenty central office departments, held day-long retreats with all their staff and going through the current year, um, PGSMs in terms of the current year strategic initiatives, how they were going, whether the red, yellow, green, what needed to happen to get them, you know, moving forward if they were paused or celebrating the good successes. And then, um, using that information and the strategic plan, setting departmental goals for next year so that all of our departments are moving in the same direction, supporting the same strategic initiatives and that we, um, prioritize our budget asks to support those goals. But here's a representative, it's very draft form at this point, um, of things that are driving the budget for, uh, under the strategic plan. Um, we have quite a bit of growth in that, um, Superintendent Mitchell mentioned Lighthouse School, um, expanding CANS and expanding LEAP and grade levels, expanding Spencer to the eleventh grade, Gamble Elementary for two more classes. Um, Chivvy has some expansion. And then, um, preschool to add five classes, the, it's the Mozart, um, site. And then we also had some facility, um, upgrades at CANS, LEAP, Spencer, West High, Data High. And so those efforts are, will cost the budget an additional five point five million dollars to, to the general fund operating budget. And then in addition to that, in the strategic plan, in terms of social, emotional and, and career in college, um, efforts, we're adding ten counselors, eight English language learners, um, staff members, fourteen school social workers and adding four more specialized units as we continue to draw, um, students with special needs into the district. And so that totals, uh, nine million dollars together with the growth. And then if we continue to move forwards, the board decides to move forward with obtaining another building and some other upgrades that were considered in the growth plan. And we try to finance that through the COPs, the certificates of participation. I'm anticipating about a two and a half million dollar capital lease payment each year to be added to that budget. So, um, just to reiterate, we're looking to add eleven and a half million dollars to this year's budget if nothing else changes, just to support the strategic plan growth. So then, um, we kind of changed our efforts towards, um, the closure, um, and what life will look like. And so we've been, uh, in the treasurer's office, been, um, tracking three major areas of information. So the House of Great City Schools Chief Financial Officers get together weekly. The Hamilton County Treasurers get together weekly. And then the Big City Treasurers get together weekly. And so three of us are monitoring all those meetings and taking notes and sharing information, because there's so much information coming from so many different areas, it's hard to because there's so much information coming from so many different areas, it's hard to keep track. But this is the information that we've gathered for the week. So in Ed Week, um they announced that the US um Public Pension Plan dropped a trillion dollars. It's a twenty percent loss of all funds. Um, that came from Moody's report. Focus Ed has reported that Ohio unemployment is up um more than double than it was all of last year, just the last three weeks. And that their tax receipts are down already in March to ten and a half percent. Sales taxes are lagging sixty-eight million dollars in the month of March, and Ohio income tax is already um lagging two hundred and twenty, two point eight million. And that's important to us, not necessarily because of it's going to hit us this year. But when um information comes, the state income tax goes down, then the state's actually looking at cutting their budget by twenty percent, which um K-12 will suffer. Um, at some point, we don't know, understand yet how, but they're already talking about reducing the um per pupil allocation for next year. And then, of course, as people all around us are being laid off, their ability to pay property taxes um is of concern. And we've already heard from the Hamilton County auditor that tax collections are already starting to decline. Um, the US Department of Labor announced that the unemployment rate's at fourteen point seven percent, which is the highest since nineteen forty. And um I think I already said, large city treasurers indicated that they're looking at the twenty percent budget cut for this year, which annualized would be about a four percent budget cut. And so we're all considering how we're going to reflect that in our forecasts. And then how, what does that do to impact our budget target for next year? All the bond rating agencies are, are reporting negative out, economic outlooks. And then just this morning, I received an update from yesterday's uh meetings um in terms of budget reductions across the entire county, Hamilton County of twenty percent. Um, like once again, reporting their state taxes down, um casino revenues are down. Um, I imagine the casinos are closed. Um, and that most of new projects and developments are being discontinued across the county. So um, once again, how does that reflect in our budget? So if you remember in our general fund, half of our revenues, basically half of our revenues come from local property taxes and a few other sources of pilot payments. And the other half of our revenues come from state foundation formula. And so um a four percent or a five percent decrease in both of those sources would represent close to thirty million dollars of lost revenues for us, which would be devastating. Um, so if you recall, in the November forecast presentation, um you typically see, I show you this slide every year, and it shows the relation to, between forecasted revenues, which are the orange and blue lines, if you can see this, I don't, I'm not sure if you can see it on the little screen. But the top line represents the expenditures. And so in the forecast, it always considers the expenditures will grow at the same rate that it has been growing at with um cost of living increases and stuff like that. Um, the bottom two lines actually show the relationship to our cash balance as things change with expenditures or revenues. And so that arrow in the middle um right here shows that if revenues start to decline because of the economic changes and expenses don't decline, our cash balance is going to decline faster than we anticipated. So we're trying to stay very focused, maintaining a good cash reserve. Um, be good stewards of our public tax dollars. Um, and so there is some state aid out there. We've been hearing a lot about the CARES Act. Um, and the information that's coming um from us is Ohio hasn't reallocated theirs out to the districts yet. Um, but what we're hearing is that, well, it'll be about seventy percent of our Title I allocation. And so I've shown you a little math down at the bottom of that slide that this year's Title I allocation is close to twenty-nine million dollars. So seventy percent of that would represent twenty. I imagine we'll have to share that with the auxiliary, as they always take um, share our Title I allocations, but we haven't seen any details yet. And I focused there in red font that the money has to be spent through September. So it's not like we can use this CARE Act to support all of next year's budget. And so we're looking at um how can we make use of this money that we don't have yet, but we have to use it by September thirtieth. So uh here's a slide of what we've seen as allowable uses. I bolded and underlined um some of the highlights, so because it's a lot of um print. But you know, for educational technology, online learning, summer support, health services, meal services, emergency preparation. It's pretty broad definitions for us. Um, and ODE is still saying it might take a couple more weeks for us to get the money out. But we'll certainly keep you informed as, as we are collecting information. Um, okay, so where does that leave us with the budget? Um, we've been talking about the changes to the current year in terms of the closure. You know, what kind of savings are we going to have? What kind of delayed projects have had to happen um as a result of the closure? And if you also recall that we gave a three-year mid, um I'm sorry, mid-year, a three percent COLA, cost of living increase to all employees. It wasn't in the forecast or the budget at the time, and so we have to make sure that we consider that. Um, and then there was some other non-forecasted expenditures. Um, one example of that is the increase in the voucher program. If you recall, I reported that the change in eligibility rules increased our voucher tuition by about four and a half million dollars this year that we had not anticipated. So um as we're looking at, what is our cash balance and our expenditure is going to look like at the end of this year? And how does that carry into next year? Um, makes an impact, it makes a difference. And so uh we're working through those issues now. Um, then what does next year's revenue look like? Now, I've spoken to the large city treasurers a couple times. Most of their um plans are to not change their forecast, because there's just so much unknown out there that they're a footnote um what the risks are. Um, and we really don't know what the impact to enrollment is going to be during this. Like, how are our preschool families going to um feel about putting their three and four-year-olds out there in public again? Or what schools aren't going to survive this closure and will children return back to us? Will we have a, an exponential growth in our enrollment? So we're looking at those items. Um, and then we'll try to offset those things with the CARE Act that I spoke about earlier. So our next steps are, you know, to get feedback from today um in terms of, you know, what the budget target might look like next year. We, um if we're delaying um projects that'll push more cash into our year-end balance, are we um okay with growing next year's target so that we can cover those strategic projects that we weren't able to complete this year? Performance leadership team meets on Tuesday and to review uh where we stand. And um, you know, in twenty-seven years in the district, I've never seen the budget ask come in below the budget target. And so as we're changing the budget target, we're trying to determine what our priorities are and what we might need to shave back or, or change. Um, we're still scheduled for a public hearing on Wednesday, the twenty-second. Um, and once again, we'll get feedback from the public for that week, the next week, and then so that we can be ready for the next public hearing on May sixth. And then um, once again, we have to, we're hoping to do the final budget presentation and a five-year forecast um by the end of May to get board approval, so we can file with the Hamilton County Budget Commission in June. So with that, I can enter any, entertain any questions. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can see who's talking.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer Wagner. We'll now open um the discussion with board members. Please, board members, please unmute to make sure that uh you're being heard. And Mr. Lindby, you, you go first.
Um, thanks Carolyn. And Jen, thanks for the, the presentation. Uh, you may have said this on a slide, and I may have just missed it. But um I, I, I love the slide where you had a summary of all the different competing moving forces with the FY20 budget. It was towards the end. Did you also, like, uh, I know there's a lot that's up in the air, but like your best guess of what the bottom line is for the FY21 budget? Like, how close or far away we're going to be from where you'd like us to be? Did you say that?
No, I have not shared that yet, because we still, what I want to do is share with the leadership team logic about what a new target would look like, what's reasonable for us. And then um depending on what that is, then the gap changes, you know, the, where we stand um in terms of the budget ask. And so we, we don't even know if the budget ask individuals are going to change because of our new normal, like this new remote learning environment. So it's um, it's, it's difficult.
It's a lot. So, so what, what I'm taking away is we're not there yet, but we're on a path to get there.
Yes, we just had to revise our path just a tad. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, Ms. Bolton, you need to unmute?
Thank you.
Anyway, I, okay, Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the, the uh report. I also would want to be able, and maybe you sent it via email and I didn't check, but I really would like to see the complete report um again um as soon as possible, even today or tomorrow, so that we can look at it individually and think about it. I'm going to say what I said to you before. I, I think that the May date is too aggressive, especially since we don't know um enough information yet. I mean, if I can try to convince somebody to go to at least the, what, June first meeting, that gives us another week and a half or something. Just, you don't feel like you have to hold to that. I know we want to. Uh, but I just think there's too many, uh, too many changes. But there are some clarification about the uh CARES piece. Uh, is that going to be a one-time allotment? As much as the Obama innovation monies were, where you knew they weren't going to be continued every year, but you would, you would, it was something to spend once? Is that how it's going to be, Jen?
That's how I'm interpreting the information at this point. And because, because they're limiting our spending to September thirtieth, it sounds like it's a real quick thing. The other thing that concerns me is where this money is coming from and what programs are they going to cut to fund it? And so there's a lot of unknowns out there. And um, you're right, as much as the information changes on a daily basis, and in fact, um, I got an email this morning that the city council announced like a sixty-five million dollar deficit for their budget next year. And so um that will have a secondary impact on us and our finances. And so um I'm even one thinking that maybe we approve a temporary appropriation um for the first ninety days of the school year, as we see how things are going to re-respond. I don't know, it's really hard to forecast this unknown thing.
And I'm glad to hear that we're flexible and we're not holding necessarily to that target. It's uh, uh, that would, that makes sense to me. And the one time, if I recall with the Obama money, we made some concerted efforts to know that it wouldn't necessarily be replaced, and it wasn't. Uh, so kind of a one-time expenditure starts to make sense to me instead of, you know, relying on that. I think that was something that uh we all worked on before. I, there was a reference to additional um facility issues and, and the amount, and it still only came to eleven point five, so that's not talking about any, right now, there might be increased debt, but you're talking about the expense of facility expansion or addition.
Right, right. So sometime soon, in early May, the superintendent and her team are going to, are going to present the whole growth plan and what that looks like costing out. If I took that plan and then borrowed money during the certificates of participation, we would have to cover two and a half million dollars of extra lease payments in our operating budget. But we need a plan for that in our budgets, we can make those payments.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't like this.
Ms. Bolton, uh, when you go down to, I, I don't know if you're referring, we can't hear you, you break up. Thanks.
Okay, this better, I hope. Uh, I liked the phasing it as, or at least thinking about it as the new normal and also the strategic plan. I think the more we can integrate the new normal with the strategic plan, because it doesn't necessarily make sense to have a strategic plan that was necessarily developed before the new normal is to be kind of considered. So I think that's a good way to review the strategic plan and keep moving forward on it. Um, and cash flow uh and carryover. Uh, it would seem to me that, yes, that has to be looked at very carefully. Uh, and it's pretty obvious, at least to this one board member, that also there will have to be reduction of expenditures yet.
Yeah, so um this is, I forgot to mention this. So the lead, the team is going through all the open contracts that we already have for this year, and whether those are still needed or not. You know, if we're not providing, if we're not obtaining those services, then we're not going to continue to pay those. Um, and then we're also looking at all the pending requisitions that were out there that had not yet turned into purchase orders to see, is that really something that's needed or not? Um, and so we're scrutinizing everything we spend money on right now, so that we can preserve as much cash into next year um to avoid any kind of a layoff. I mean, people are laying off all around us, and so we're doing our best to um prevent that from happening to our employees.
And I would suggest, uh, and we want to avoid that. I've been on the board for twelve years. We've not had a major riff in those twelve years, and we're proud of that. But I'm going to also say a, a district is people-heavy, and that's where the money is. And so it would not be a bad idea to understand that as much as we don't want to, we're going to have to have that even be on the table. So I appreciate the work and look forward to being able to review the report a little bit more. But everything's on the table and, and uh we have big decisions to make, and thank you very much.
Okay. Great. Other comments or questions? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and I think a lot of the comments I was going to make have been made, so I won't reiterate those. But um, you know, I think that um as with all of our programming and learning and all the things we talked about in the previous conversation, you know, all bets are off. We've got to operate in a new world. I think the same thing comes um in finances too. And probably many of you or many of us, people around on the phone, et cetera, our companies are doing this exact same thing. And where we, we're building uh full-year budgets. Now we're doing uh full-year budget scenario planned with some basic assumptions. Um, but then, you know, going to that quarter by quarter. And I think uh you touched on that at the end, where, you know, looking at that ninety-day versus a twelve-month. But, you know, I think all the things that I'm curious about is, you know, when you talked about potentially, or earlier, it was talked about potentially having half of our kids go in the morning and half in the afternoon. I'm just thinking about the transportation costs and all of that. Um, there's just going to be so much uh to consider based on what we find out. And we may not know, um, may not know the answers to all these questions soon enough. So the more we can push it out, I'm in favor of that, so that the assumptions that we make are as close to uh being current, um, knowing that this is going to evolve over time. But, you know, I, I, I think definitely this quarter-by-quarter budgeting, changing the way we, we look at our finances, and then um, you know, strategically looking at those trade-offs um are going to be critical at this time and prioritizing those things. So thanks to, to the entire team for looking at those open items and those things to come to make sure that we're focused on those priority things only and holding on what we can until we have some more information.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Wagner.
I just didn't want to mislead anybody. We do have the opportunity to either adopt a year's appropriation or a ninety, ninety-day and then do the rest of the year. It's not once every quarter. But we can revise appropriations as we go throughout the year. So I just didn't want to mislead anybody to say we were going to do um a quarterly budget approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I, I just have one final question and then a close-out comment. Um, one of the sub-bullets under here was regarding the impact on 2020 tax credit. And I know that this committee uh is not prepared to come up and say uh, you know, what the realities about this is, and so I'm not asking for that. But if, if, you know, as we talk about next steps, it might be uh wise if we could get a report once that committee meets and can come up, just uh inform us and give us some feedback on kind of where things are now. That would be very helpful, I think. Okay? Um, and then closing out, and we can, we're, we're, actually, we caught up on time, so we're good. But in closing out, I, I really appreciate this. I really like uh and support Ms. Bolton's comment about incorporating or integrating our new normal in the strategic plan. I think all of us recognize when this happened, when this pandemic happened, that the strategic plan was going to be significantly impacted. And so it just makes sense for us, again, to move forward and look at our new normal in that respect. So, thanks. Okay, alrighty. So uh moving on, if it's okay. So, uh, moving on, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to adjust the agenda and maybe have the, uh, public engagement piece, uh, now, so that people are, uh, can ask questions and make comments i- in regard to what we've already talked about, or if they have different questions. Are, are we okay with that? Are folks okay with that? Board members, okay. Alrighty, so we'll, we'll move forward. Alrighty, so, um, here we go, this is for our public, um, instructions. So, we've reached the agenda item for public engagement in our Q and A session. Um, a member of the audience can ask to participate by requesting, uh, to interact live on your screen or app. Once, once we see the request, Treasurer Wagner has the ability to bring you into the live meeting to speak with us in real time. We asked the members of the public, if invited to speak, keep their comments and questions brief, probably around three minutes, and, you know, we're trying to be flexible, but around three minutes, Ms. Wagner, uh, will be keeping that time for us. Um, if a board member or a member of the administration wishes to respond, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. We've allocated about, uh, 15, 20 minutes, however, we do have some time, so we'll build some flexibility and if we, if there is, uh, a demand for that. Um, and I think the public should know that we've been working on building this component for a couple of weeks, and so this is really our test, so that we can move forward to make sure that we incorporate hearing of the public in our public meetings. So, uh, it is working for us, and, uh, I think we're in good shape here. So, closing, um, and then I'll give you these instructions. If you don't have the opportunity to participate today, let me remind you that all of our, uh, board members and administrators are keeping close tabs on the phones and email. Please do not hesitate to get in touch with us, uh, with your concern, and we, we will make every effort to address your questions. Okay, so here are the, uh, there are four specific steps for, uh, you to participate in the Q and A. Um, first, uh, to speak, you will need to send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. Secondly, once the request has been granted, you will receive a notice on your screen. Click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Okay, so we're gonna open it up now for any questions or comments from our live audience. And Ms. Wagner, I'll wait, I'll wait for you to signal me or announce the name. We'll give it a minute or two, since we're on a 30-second delay. Wow. Okay.
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Another minute or so. Is it that, if people don't have any questions or comments today, or, uh, not sure how the, are the instruction, I don't know, are, were the instructions clear? Uh, board members, did you feel like the instructions were clear?
Yeah.
Okay. None? Okay.
You know.
All right, Ms. Bates?
The instructions may have been clear, but I know having an iPad, it's different for me than it is for people who don't have Apple. So, that's just, you know, maybe that's an issue that we can look into.
Okay, thank you.
We have somebody, we have somebody, let me find them.
Okay.
So, some, um, a public member named Linda, you'll be joining us.
Okay, Linda? Linda will join us, just jump right in, Linda, when you're ready. We're not hearing.
All right, we'll try, Carol Gibbs is next.
Okay. Ms. Gibbs? I think, I, I'm wondering if we're having a technical issue, if we can't hear people? Is, is there any?
Yeah, so, Krista, are you there? Cause I'm not seeing the hand that's coming up with, for them.
Yes, Linda is now in presenter mode at the bottom, and I just enabled her audio, so she should be able to talk. You also have Carol Gibbs coming in, too.
Okay.
You look at the presenter mode at the bottom.
Okay, so Linda, are you there?
I am.
Great. Welcome.
I just have a question, I'm sorry, I just have a question about, uh, the grades for fourth quarter.
Uh, it, I, I, she has, did everybody hear that? And I'm going to direct that to the, uh, the superintendent or Tiana Amat, which one?
I'm here, I'm available.
Tiana, uh, Ms. Amat, can you respond?
Yes.
Okay, I guess what I want to know is, there, there's a grade for third quarter, because that was finished, and there will either be a pass or an incomplete for fourth quarter. If there ends up being an incomplete, does that stop the student from moving on to the next grade?
No, it does not.
Okay. With, whether, will that, so, so if they had an A in the third quarter and an incomplete for some reason in the fourth quarter, um, they should still pass?
Yes. Um, the purpose of looking at that incomplete is when we return, that's an indication, maybe there's some gaps, and so some supports can be provided to that student. But part of this policy is no harm to students.
Okay, cause I know she's been on the A honor roll, A honors, oh, so far this year, so, um, just don't wanna mess anything up, just in case.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Good, good work, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Do we have?
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Ms. Gibbs, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello?
Hello. So I actually have three things I'd like to ask. Um, one, Jen, when is, how, and how's the budget hearing going to be public on Wednesday? Is it gonna be, did I miss that?
Um, so Wednesday's a public board meeting, and so we'll just be presenting probably similar to what I have, what I presented today.
Okay, so the public will not be interacting in that, that'll just be board?
Yeah. Ms. Gibbs? There, there will be, there will be a hearing of the public, uh, on Wednesday, so the public will be allowed to respond.
Okay, so it'll be set up like this, basically?
Similar, it'll be a hearing, it will, it probably will, I don't know yet if it'll be Q and A or just a straight hearing of the public, that's part of our standard agenda.
Okay, okay.
But there will, there will be a segment.
Second, did we get, do we have a, um, handle on how many kids are not able to access internet or who, who don't have Wi-Fi or, or even don't have computers? You have any idea what the percentage is?
Yes, that's roughly about 30%.
Okay. I, I understand that Spectrum is offering free, uh, Wi-Fi to our kids, is that, is that real?
That is correct, but it's, uh, short-term, and if you have a bill that is unpaid, they will not, uh, offer the Wi-Fi.
Well, that's... And, and last, you know, this coronavirus has made a lot of changes in everybody's lives, um, and we have had to reassess integrity and, uh, cooking and, uh, socializing, and I, I would like to offer that we perhaps do some lobbying, both from the community and also from the board, uh, maybe to the feds, about going back to a day about three decades ago, and I know Mel and, and Eve and I are familiar with this, where large corporations, um, where the executive directors made about $100,000 and donated money, well, through their taxes and, and also donations to the public school system, that maybe now that they're making a million dollars a year, that there might be another reassessment of paying taxes and donations to the school district? That thought?
All right, okay, any thoughts about that, board members? We hear you, Ms. Gibbs. Any thought? Um... I, I guess the only thing I would say, it doesn't, it's not really, you know, I, that, that's certainly a thought. I, uh, how, how we do that, I think, is, is the question, but, um, yeah, it's, it's a point well-taken.
Yeah, they need to step forward.
Okay. Uh, I believe the superintendent raised her hand, but we need her to unmute, so.
Yes, just, uh, wanted to add, this is, it's my understanding that corporate commitments to, um, giving donations has actually, um, dropped for some of our major organizations. So, um, and I don't know if we'll continue to see that, so for example, you know, that GE has laid off a number of their people or furloughed them, and so I'm not sure if their commitment to giving is at the same level that they can afford to do that. So just a thought on that. I've, I've heard that the commitments around giving, corporations' giving is, is down.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Gibbs?
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ed Pfaff. Go ahead, Ed.
Hi there, everyone.
Oh, great, hi.
Hi, hi, good to see you all again. I know it's been a little while, but, uh, just know that I'm staying in tune as much as I can with what's going on. I appreciate having the opportunity for questions and answers. I don't really have, uh, a lot to say right now at this time, but I do look forward to the first, uh, budget hearing on Wednesday. I will make sure my schedule is clear, so I can attend. Um, it does look like at Hyde Park School, we are trending towards four kindergarten classes next year, which is up another kindergarten class from this current year, so, uh, as things go, we still look like we are adding, uh, students to our enrollment. So, I appreciate, uh, all your work in this budget process, and I'd like to just make sure that you keep Hyde Park School on your minds.
Thank you, Mr. Pfaff. Okay. Oh, and, and, and if I could respond to Mr. Pfaff again, uh, we, we do have on our schedule to, to do a more in-depth presentation on our, uh, enrollment, uh, on our growth plan and our enrollment forecast. Uh, I believe that date, I'm, I hope I'm not wrong about this, but it's around May 11th or something, so you can look forward to an announcement about that.
Okay, great, I appreciate it. I, this, all this time at home gives me ample opportunity to attend the meeting, so hopefully I can make them all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else, Ms. Wagner?
We do, we have Max Lonberg, go ahead, Max.
Uh, thanks, hi, everyone, good to see everyone.
Hello.
Hi, I apologize if this has already been addressed, but has there been a decision about graduation ceremonies yet?
Uh, yes, there was. Yeah, there was. Can, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Amat?
Yes, we are in the process of scheduling a date for both a virtual and an in-person, uh, graduation ceremony. We're looking at both July and August.
So just to clarify, um, July for a virtual ceremony and then August for an in-person?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great. Any other questions? I, I did get a, I did get a, a very important text message, um, and, uh, Ms. Bates, you were accurate, uh, it was reported that, uh, let me read from here, that, uh, Mac Computers did not have a hand to request comment, um, so we will, we will try to work that out, uh, for our upcoming meeting on Wednesday. So sorry about that. Okay, are, any more questions, comments? Wonderful. Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Just, uh, since you mentioned the text piece, I then looked at mine, and a wonderful former board member, Mr. Davis, has said that he likes the idea of the, uh, teachers, uh, performing, providing their best lessons by standards, like the, I call it CPS College, which is a bad name, but the idea of having a library of our best instructors doing their best instruction would be really great and would have been very valuable. So, thanks to, uh, Ozzy Davis, and, uh, so pleased he's joined us today.
Okay, great. Okay. So, uh, we, we, we are gonna move on. I wanna thank the audience for allowing us to test this out with you today, and we appreciate the, the questions and the comments that you brought forward, and, and hopefully we'll hear from you on Wednesday as well. Okay, so moving on, we have one board matters, um, uh, item, and I guess this is kind of a board development thing, um, and I'm going to ask Mr. Messer if he wants to introduce it, and, uh, uh, we'll move from there.
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, the, the purpose of putting this on was kind of a follow-up to, um, you know, some of our previous conversations, and, you know, in a virtual world here and with things, um, that really aren't business as usual today, um, you know, we talked about how we can, um, you know, really streamline our communication to be, uh, effective board members, but also to, uh, be mindful of the environment, um, of the administration and, and of running the district. So, um, this was more of, uh, A, a check-in, you know, to see how we are, um, kind of, uh, navigating these waters, based on those previous conversations, and to see if, um, you know, there's any additional adjustments that need to be made or, or guidance, uh, that type of thing.
Okay. Board members, any response, feedback?
You know, and, and I'll, let me just start, so personally, um, you know, as, you know, this, these times probably we're getting 10 times more questions and feedback and, and that type of thing, and I do feel like, um, following, again, some of our earlier conversations and trying to streamline these, um, what is the best way for, uh, me to handle some of these questions, um, you know, as they're coming? You know, are we kind of in the process where we should, um, submit those to the superintendent, and then she designates those, should we send them to Carolyn? What's the best way to handle these going forward?
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I, I'm, just trying to pick up on, on what the general issue is, is it just board to administration or intra-board communication? How would you kind of classify it, Ryan? What do you, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, I think the majority of what I'm getting, uh, and probably other people are in the same boat, but you get tons of things, um, I don't wanna, um, burden the superintendent, um, by sending tons of things over, I don't know if they're duplicative, it is, should we be filtering with each other? I'm just trying to figure out how to kind of navigate these things, cause we're gonna have... have lots of questions continuing as we have all this uncertainty. And, you know, I, just knowing from my non-CPS work, nothing's really slowed down, and things are just kind of frantic. And I'm just trying to figure out how to filter some of these things that are coming to me so that I'm not sending 20 things over to the superintendent that maybe other people have already sent because they've heard from somebody else. So how we, just trying to kind of get that communication process up and running, because sometimes I feel a little paralyzed on what to do. Again, knowing that times are frantic and I definitely don't want to provide duplicative work or otherwise. And is, you know, is there anything that we can do in this time to aggregate that?
Ms. Bolton?
I do like, I do like how we've had the daily report from the superintendent. I think that would be good. I think that's very helpful. I'm still more comfortable sending whatever I get to the administration, which is sort of what our board staff is instructed to do. We will forward to the administration, since they're the only ones that can take action. We can't take action. But it might be interesting to have a better run on what is being asked. And I don't know if that's something that the superintendent needs to add to her daily report, or I would prefer that we all have the opportunity to submit to administration whatever comes up. But I'm open to suggestions.
Yes. I want to comment on that, but Ms. Bates, go ahead. Ms. Bates?
I would say if it's a constituent matter, send them to the customer care line, because we really staff that. We don't, you know, if it's something that, you know, superintendent doesn't have to handle every parental request, if we have people trained to do that. Now, if it's something that comes from staff because they don't want to go to their building rep and make a big deal about it and that kind of thing, that's, I think, is more appropriate to send to the superintendent.
Okay, so let me, let me just jump in here because, and just like all of us, we get lots of questions and people who reach out to us on Facebook and what have you. Kind of a rule of thumb for me, and I, let me backtrack a little bit, because I, that, the daily report, the two times daily report has been extremely helpful. And I think because it does give us information about what's happening on a day-to-day basis. However, when I get inquiries via text or calls or Facebook, I really have to decide where that lies. And anything that has to do with our day-to-day operations, I send it to the superintendent. And I have to decide, I mean, is, you know, does everything have to go to her? I don't think necessarily. Sometimes a simple response is all people want, but if it's something that has to do with operations, how things are going or not going well, I direct those to the superintendent. The idea of using customer service, customer care, I've done that too. Like when they have questions about magnet enrollment and stuff, I direct them to customer care. All right? But I also have a comment about, well, what happens around media requests? Because we all get requests from media. I have made it a standard practice to direct them to our new person, Krista Boyle. And I don't have any problems addressing any media concerns, but I think, you know, we have to, for me, I think it's important that we utilize that venue to have Krista be that point person, if, you know, for us to address media. And I, you know, I was asked to participate in the press conference, and I got the call back on like April 3rd, and I got the call from Mayor Cranley's office. And I, my first thought was, well, have they talked to Krista and what is this about and all of that? So I redirected them, whatever, and then I ended up going to the, and participating in the press conference. So I think it's a matter of thinking through, you know, for me, it is, where do things lie? What do we have in place to address the community's concerns? So I don't think anything is sort of an automatic thing. We really have to think through, is it operational? Is it high-level board work or whatever? But I try to stay out of the weeds. That's not my, you know, that's not my strength there. So I do as much to direct a lot of the operational pieces to leadership. Okay, Ryan, Mr. Messer, I saw your hand, and superintendent, I saw yours. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, you know, I, yes, I liked where Ms. Bolton was going. You know, a great example is, you know, I had in my to-do list, like the question about Madisonville and the use of the garden, et cetera. And, you know, so I could check that off the list, because Mike asked it here, but I'm thinking about her idea of kind of keeping track of the things that are asked. So maybe when we send things over, we copy Phyllis, and there can just be a list, like, here are the questions, and you can see, and we have access to that list, like, once a week, here's the things that have gone in, check the box. Good, somebody's made contact. Because I think what happens is, we have a very connected board to the community, and people, maybe sometimes the same person will ask multiple people, but sometimes it's different people on the same topic. That would actually make me feel better. I don't know what you guys think of that, but that could be a way for us just kind of see the running tab of questions. You can say, that's already been sent in, I don't need to send it.
Yeah. Mr. Messer, I think to respond to that, Phyllis, they, our office does that already. Now, what, what might be, what we might want to consider, when you say you want sort of a running tab, one of the things that happens is, is if we get any email or phone kinds of requests, if I get those, I respond to those. And so, and it, one of the things that I do is, it really depends on the nature of the message, because I'm trying to not inundate you all with a lot of things that have a simple response. But if it's like a major issue or concern, then I would certainly copy you on that as well as direct it to the superintendent or wherever it needs to go. So, so she does do that. And if we, if we want that to look different, and if you want to see everything, then I'm sure we could work that out with our staff.
So her list would be things that go to the general board. I'm thinking more the one-off things. So, you know, before I send it on, I could just see if that was on the list, that somebody else had copied Phyllis when they sent it to the superintendent. I could say, oh, that's already been sent in, check the list. Just trying to be efficient in our communication.
Okay. Yep, I got it. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, you had your hand up?
Yes, if I could just offer something that would be helpful to the administration to make sure they were able to get the information back to you in a timely manner. One consideration that I would ask you to at least entertain is that if the assignments or questions, the questions go to the board office on a cadence of a certain, certain days of the week, that the information is then compiled into one document and then sent to the administration. So maybe it's three times a week or two times a week. So I will know to expect it on every Tuesday and Thursday or every Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And I'm in conversation with the PLT four times a week. The only day we aren't together is on Thursday, but then I can deploy the resources in terms of who needs to do what, and then we won't, we won't have the duplication. So it would help the administration if the board office staff could compile that information by person and then send it over to us on a cadence. Just a thought.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Ms. Bates?
You mean, just to clarify, instead of sending you emails directly, Ms. Mitchell, we send them to the board office, and then they're sent to you. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is what I'm suggesting, unless it's an urgent matter, thing to take care of right away. Just a thought. Otherwise, I can, can continue to take them one at a time. I just thought in terms of efficiency, but I'm open to what works for the board.
Okay. I think, I think we could work with that. Ms. Mr. Messer, followed by Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, yeah, I love that idea. And we frankly kind of talked about this a while back, in that, you know, if somebody sends something to the board office, then it gets sent on, and then not only does superintendent get it, we get a copy of everything kind of throughout the week. And, you know, all of us are probably in email, HE double hockey sticks. It just feels like everything has just sped up from a communication standpoint, now that people are standing still even more than it was before. So if we could streamline that, it would help me frankly weed out a whole lot of emails if we aggregated all the requests. So Thursday end of day or Friday end of day, anything that came in that week that was a question or whatever, whether it came to one of us individually or it came into the board office, it gets summarized. You know, here they are in a copy of the emails once a week. That, that would solve, I think, a big number of problems, a large number of problems. I like that idea.
Okay, great. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. If we're, protocol says if we are asking for information, not trying to, to solve something, but if we, any request of information that we have, we send it to the superintendent and we send it, it's copied to all our board members. So any request for information. But what we're talking about here is needing answers or FYI superintendent, there's this kind of discussion in Madisonville or something. I think it would make sense to have a combined effort, almost like a, almost like a board packet on Fridays, as to what's been brought to attention. And I think that would make sense if it's collected by the board staff and then, you know, sent to the administration, but also we would all know that there are a number of people in Madisonville that want us to do something or whatever. It's better than, than some of the other ways of doing it. But I would be supportive of an electronic Friday packet that, whatever we've all brought, but I don't want to lose the request for information part of the protocol. Not a small answer. Okay, I think that's, for public record, I think that's important.
Yes, I agree with that. Okay, we can work on that.
If the cadence needs to be more than once a week, so I can get the answers back to you quickly, that I'm fine with that. The, just the compilation is what's, what's helpful. So if it needs to be a couple times a week, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. We'll work with that. Anything else then around that matter? Okay. Any other, any additional before we move into the resolution? Any other board matters that did not get on the agenda that we might want to discuss? Ms. Bolton?
Just one. I want to say hi to Pat and Phyllis, and I know we all miss you.
They, I'm gonna tell you, I want to give, we don't typically give kudos on work sessions, but I will give kudos to them in helping to assist in organizing all these blue jean things for us and trying to keep us together. So they deserve that acknowledgement, and we thank them very much for that. Yep. Okay, resolution, we want to present the resolution for consideration, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Bolton, as chair of the finance committee, if you could present the following resolution?
Is it gonna be displayed on the screen? Because I'll have to put it off the screen.
Okay. Um, that's...
There'll be a...
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm pleased and proud to do this, and I appreciate the administration making this known to us as something that needed to be done. The resolution begins, Cincinnati Public Schools Authorization for Payment of District Employees. Whereas on March 12th, 2020, and in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Mike Dewine endorsed, I mean, ordered the closure to students of all Ohio K-12 schools effective at the end of the day on March 16th, 2020 through the April of 2020, and on March 20, 2020, ordered the extension of the closure through April 30th, 2020. And, you want me to continue or are we sharing it? I'll do another whereas real quick. Whereas the Board of Education has evaluated the present operational needs of the district, including creating and supporting remote learning opportunities for students, the ongoing food services distribution of school breakfasts and lunches, the maintenance, repair, cleaning and sanitizing of district facilities, payroll and other fiscal matters, and many other district operations that are continuing during the shutdown. And whereas the Board of Education also contemplated the need to retain employees during the time schools are closed, so that the district will be appropriately staffed, oh, you just lost me there, appropriately staffed. And when schools under its collective bargaining agreements with employees and state and federal law, now therefore be it resolved that for all these reasons, the Board of Education has determined that it is the best interest of the district and accordingly, a proper public purpose, Jen's favorite phrase, to maintain the pay of CPS employees during the time schools are closed, and be it further resolved that the board recognizes that to this point, the district has maintained the regular pay of employees who would otherwise have been assigned to work during this time. The board recognizes that the district has paid all regular employees of the district at their regular rate, but without having time, card verification of the employees' working hours. The board approves such pay and determines that it was in the best interest of the district and a proper public purpose to pay its employees. Be it further resolved that the board authorizes the administration to continue its careful consideration of the work needs of the district, the need to retain employees during closure of schools, and all other operational needs of the district, and to pay its employees as the administration determines to be in the best interest of the district. Submitted by the board, I submit and hope for a second and approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Messer, seconded? Mr. Messer, we got you. Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I think it's important for the administration to also inform us, after we pass this, I'm sure unanimously, to give us a comparative analysis of what other districts are doing and to support the treasurer and the superintendent in this very important decision and providing these sorts of opportunities and services to our employees.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, motion is approved. Thank you. I just wanted to comment that, you know, we, we talked about earlier in the meeting about this being sort of not a standard agenda and how we use the board work session. I think that personally, this has been a very, very good work session discussion, and I appreciate the board members for, for their participation. We have a very talkative group and trying to maintain the timelines on this stuff, but it ended up working out. So I really appreciate all that energy that we put into making sure that we are communicating to the public what's going on with the district. And again, thanks to leadership team, Laura and Jen and other members of the leadership team for giving us, providing us this comprehensive update. So, so we're gonna move into next steps. Now, Tiffy, and this is similar to assignments. I think we've given a lot of direction, suggestions and recommendations to staff, but if we could maybe summarize around some of those so we can be clear and they can be clear what direction that we're going in, and then to remind people that a lot of this, in terms of the budget, in terms of growth and enrollment, all of those things are on the timeline for us to consider and discuss at our board meeting. So I'll open it up then for any next steps. Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Just generally speaking, I think we've made it very clear that we are being flexible and very aggressive and very innovative. I want to just make sure that the... I want to just make sure that the superintendent and the folks are able to hold everyone accountable for the work that is being done for and with our children. But more particularly for me personally, I think the, the lesson learned today is that we face major financial decisions. And we have to face those decisions broadly as well as very specifically on a very tight frame. And I'm thrilled that we have the superintendent that we have. I'm equally thrilled that we have the treasurer that we have. And those sorts of decisions can't all be made by them because these are so large that they will need to know that they have the board's support. Because having gone through this, and Mel's gone through it before, when you make cuts or when you have to make difficult decisions, it is the, it is the board's responsibility. And they have, and our superintendent and our treasurer needs to have our support completely. So I appreciate the presentations today.
Thank you. Any other next steps or final comments? Superintendent, yeah, superintendent?
Just so you know, I captured every board member's comments and next steps. I can read them to you or I can send them to you in a memo, but I have them all here and it'll be a part of our work.
Yeah, you might just, yeah, just a suggestion. Put it in your daily report when you summarize. That'll work. Mr. Marowski, did you have a question? Did I see your hand? Okay. Yeah, this was a great meeting, folks. And if we're, you know, we are, I was happy and I feel very, let me say accomplished with the help of all our IT folks who helped us with this around the public engagement piece. We will work to make sure that all our Mac users have access to our upcoming meetings. So you can look forward to having our hearing of the public incorporated as of Wednesday. So, which means I'll be working on it Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday to get it right. Okay. Anything else? Okay, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
You guys be well. Have a good day.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great weekend.
Right. Bye.
Well, how about that?